We will hold off on, normally we have comments from staff. We're going to hold off on that as I am expecting a motion, a specific motion to be brought forth. Commissioner Harrison?
We're going to make, I'm going to make a motion to table this just in light of having two commissioners not here tonight. They've, I think they've listened to all six hearings, is it? And I think it's important that we have our full commission here tonight.
May I have a second on the, is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Francis, okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Francis? I think Commissioner Harrison, anything I'd further to add?
No, I appreciate the public's participation throughout this deliberation and I hope that you'll respect our decision tonight.
Commissioner Francis, anything? I have some comments.
It's been a long hearing, but I appreciate that the two commissioners would like to participate because they were here for all of them.
So we have, there was a request from commissioners to be present and additional time to review the materials. This is our first time down for an executive session to discuss it. It's well within what we normally do for ma, for major applications to take additional time should the commission members desire the additional time which has been requested. Vacation week for some as well, they've requested to be, to be present. And that's something we normally do in our, in our past practices. We often grant these courtesies to commission members. Obviously, our alternates are more than capable, they were present as well. But it's a request from the, one of the regular commissions members and that's something we standardly grant. And I do apologize because I see a lot of people in the, in the, in the room who would like to have heard us. But I suspect and expect that we will be ready two weeks from now or whenever our next scheduled meeting is.
Yes, two weeks from today.
No, it's perfectly acceptable and satisfactory. Note, yes, to me, who's been here for seven years, who has done this quite often. There's a lot of material we need to go through. And the request of the commission members to be present is well satisfactory, in my opinion, and that's what's going to happen. Especially because the motion has been made, I support it. I, I would ask the rest of my commission members to support it as well. So, anything further or can we put this to a vote? Commissioner Braun?
We've got a hundred-page rebuttal that could use a little bit more attention as well, more time and attention. This has been a long, maybe one of the longest hearings I've ever been to and I, so much public involvement and it's so much appreciated. There's a lot of stuff to go through. And I, I, we all listen to what everybody says and read everybody's letters. So I hope everybody can have patience for us taking just, you know, an extra two weeks to go through and get the right answer. I just want to be fully informed and have the time to do it. We always have so much that comes up on the agenda, so I, I support.
Thank you. I mean, and to reiterate the point, we're volunteers. We all work during the day. Sorry. Here's the dog. Commissioner Berman?
I just, I couldn't agree with more with Commissioner Braun and I just wanted to ask the public. Because you've given us a very weighty responsibility sitting in these seats to just trust in us to let us try to take the time we need to make the decision we need to make.
Well, I'm not going to take, we're not going to take questions from the public at this point. We've, we've made, we're making a motion. I, as I said, I suspect and somewhat expect that we will be ready in the next scheduled hearing to go forward. So having said that, if there's any other comments from the commission, we can put this to a vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have spent six nights listening to you. We have listened, we have heard, please let us do our job. Thank you.
So, having said all that.
It doesn't take that long.
No, excuse me. Unless you're here listening and with all the weighty responsibility, I really don't believe it's in, well. We're volunteers, we work all day. And when I'm prepping for this meeting, I'm not doing work. I'm not spending time with my children, everything goes to everybody here. So please, so please, we are sacrificing our time for you. We are saying we need the additional time. That is what we are saying. Please respect that. Anything further from the commission? Anything further from the commission? Hearing none, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. C7 passes unanimously. Thank you for your time, I apologize, but again, this was needed. We'll just wait a few minutes.
The first time that that happened in four years I've been on the commission.
No, it's the fir, uh, at least that, to that extent. Uh, next applicant, next. Next, yeah. Next item, zoning regulation amendment. Application of Post Road Residential Inc. to amend section thirteen point fourteen, transit-oriented development park. Oh, mister, well, let me skip that part of it as well because I, Commissioner Harrison, I know you, I think you've reached out, you have a motion as well.
Yes. Actually, I just, I would like to table this tonight for a date certain. It could be in two weeks, I think, Mr. Wentz, and we have some time on this, at least three more meetings, I think he said it goes out or it expires in June.
Yeah, just like the last application, because both hearings closed on the same evening, you have sixty-five days from the close of the hearing. And that's noted on the agenda, the expiration date is June first. There are three meetings after tonight's meeting prior to that expiration date. So if you're not ready and want more time to consider what's been put before you, we can certainly do, entertain what was just done on the last application to give yourselves a little more time. I did provide some materials for you which, which I'm not going to reiterate now. If you have any questions about that between now and the next meeting, feel free to reach out, otherwise we'll be ready to vote in a couple of weeks.
So we have a motion to table from Commissioner Harrison, is that a second, Commissioner Braun? Or can I, okay. Commissioner Harrison, anything further?
Yeah, I would just, you know, similar to the last one, we don't have our full commission, but I would like more time. I don't know if the press would be as due, but you know, this is a major change to our zoning regulations. I personally think we need more time to be fully informed. You know, we spend a lot of meetings on a lot of planning issues like the ADUs, outdoor dining, and I think this deserves, you know, more time as well. I appreciate what the application, the applicant put forth two weeks ago, but I still need more time to digest it. And I have several questions I'm happy to go through tonight.
Well, what I would sug, well, let's.
Or maybe go give it to Mr. Wentz.
I would go through Commissioner Wentz, uh, Commissioner, Mr. Wentz's questions. I mean, we'll keep, you know, normally if it's a motion to table, we'll leave it to that.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, unless.
I have nothing additional to say.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, we had a quick intro and run-through, but this is a pretty profound change and it's so confusing that district, which you explained last time, Mr. Wentz. The district, my concern is if you, if it was built out to the max, what would be affected and how would it look? And there's many, many changes which sound fairly reasonable, but I don't know where it goes. I see concentric circles here, I see pink lines, and I have to understand. What could it look like if it's fully built out? What the height, the width, the setback, the this, the that, the commercial? If they don't use, if they only have to use twenty percent of a much smaller area, we don't know what the area is, how does that affect the commercial base that's necessary for TOD? I think there's a little more drilling down we need to do. So I agree with Commissioner Harrison.
Commissioner Berman?
Yes, I have no problem taking additional time to study this. I think that we want to get it right and we, we want to get every application right, but this is a particularly complex zoning regime in a part of Fairfield that has a lot of development. And, you know, we saw just in the last couple of weeks several different projects in the metro area. And I think that it's important to understand the implications of each of the components of the regulation amendment for metro as a whole. I personally look, look, look favorably on the regulation amendment in, in general, but I'd like to study the details a little further.
Any other member of the commission? My, my comments are similar to the previous requests that have been made for additional time to study it more. It's hard not to grant such courtesies for major app, a major application like this. As, as noted, it'll have a big, a big impact in the area. I mean, of course, our, our alternates are more than capable of handling this, but I think the additional time is warranted. Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, I, I'm particularly concerned with thirteen fourteen four because we don't have the plans, you know, just approving going from fifty to seventy-five bedrooms per acre. Were written four years ago by our consultant. And, you know, including all this street area, you just wonder, because we don't have plans, are these going to be studios, one-bedroom, two-bedroom? I don't know how many units will, you know, we keep developing these units that only require ten or twelve percent affordable. And our denominator keeps going up from twenty-two thousand to twenty-three thousand to twenty-four thousand by the time we finish a metro area. And we'll, you know, we'll never reach our ten percent and it's just, it's worrisome. And then you, you can hear legislation that's proposed and made it out of committee that they want everything within a half mile of the TOD to be, you know, heavily affordable. There are a lot of ramifications to making, I mean, these are generous enough.
No, it's well worth the time to spend and look at it. I mean, I, normally we have plans to go with regulation amendments, but I can understand why the course of action in this, in this instance makes a lot of sense to me for that particular piece of property as to why they chose to go down the route of a pre-app regulation amendment and then plans. So it makes total sense. It's a little different because you, you have something, not in a vacuum, but more of a va, more towards that than you do when you actually have plans. So it'd be nice to, as you said, as everybody said, to think about this more and see how it would be if it was fully maximized. I forget who said that, but that was a good point.
It's an unusual site and you might not mind rig changes for this site, but you know, once we change them, they're changed.
Yep.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm certainly not objecting to the motion to table, but I just want to point out, I outlined one. On the map, I give you a larger copy of what was in the staff report. It's kind of hard to see, there's a white dashed line that outlines the boundary of the zone to which this overlay applies. I have, thanks, I outlined it in darker black, but you can kind of see from the, the underlying aerial image color difference that it's.
Oh, I see. So this one that I thought was invisible is that, it could be park overlay.
It's that white.
Yeah, I see it.
So there, there is a discreet boundary for which this would apply. And then the red, there was some discussion about where the retail priority edges are and those are highlighted in the bright red color.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point out for, as you consider this.
No, that's helpful.
Now in the next meeting. And I, I just wanted to mention one other thing in response to the issue of affordable housing and two other things. I'm, I'm not sure, and we've talked about this in Pat, whether we're going to achieve ten percent ultimately. No town has since nineteen eighty-nine when this statute has been amended. We will likely in the near term of reach moratorium status. But you should know, you may have read in the paper last week that the Board of Selectmen authorized. Mark Barnhart to apply for Brownfield's grant for this property to help in its remediation. And if that is approved and accepted, that grant would trigger a requirement for a twenty percent below-market rate contribution. So the response you heard from the presentation, because of the high cost of the remediation, you challenged the applicant on whether twelve percent, if they could go higher on twelve percent. And it's largely due to the cost of remediation that that's a challenge. But if that grant is approved, would offset some of those costs and that grant would require a twenty percent contribution, which this applicant is well aware of.
Yeah. So certainly some, some that look hopefully forward to it if it goes through, but not something we can rely on.
Right, exactly. It's, nothing's guaranteed, but I just wanted to put that out there, but that the Board of Selectmen was on board with helping, potentially helping expedite the, the environmental cleanup of this site for its potential development, so.
Commissioner Braun?
Is that a new requirement for Brownfield? Is that like a standard requirement? Because that, it shouldn't happen with Metro Center.
It's, um, it did not, it's newer. Whatever, I don't know what funding mechanisms were in place for that, but you're right, it didn't trigger a twenty percent requirement, but in this case it would.
And that's a DE, no, no, that would be federal.
The state, I'm, I'm not exactly sure which arm of the state it is. It's a state, probably states seeking out federal money that filters through, but.
Usually DEC does that.
Right, right. So in any event, if, if that is approved and accepted, that would be, but again, that's, that's not part of the regulation package, it's just something to consider down the road. So I, again, if, as you mull over what we've prepared for you to consider for next time, if you've got questions about what we've presented for you, please reach out. I'm happy to talk to anybody that may have questions about the applicability or ramifications of what we have described in our staff comment.
Can I ask a quick, more clear question?
Go ahead, Ms. Braun.
The concentric circles, does that have any significance in terms of how likely development would be to be approved following this? Because there's no outline. Well, there is an outline.
The concentric circles, I believe, I don't have a copyright on it.
It's like a walk from the middle.
That's just showing a walk, the, you know, five to ten minutes, they're just different walk sheds at radius. So that's not anything from a regulatory standpoint, just saying within that first circle is a five to ten-minute walk, the second circle is a ten to fifteen-minute walk, and that outer circle barely on the upper right-hand is a fifteen to twenty-minute walk.
And the park overlay, the white dots?
Yes.
That, by proposed, that's not proposed in this regulation text amendment, and that doesn't exist now, right? We don't have an outline for the park. That's just.
We have. The.
It's, it's an overlay. So part of the application that has to be made for a project to be developed under these regulations is you have to agree that this project is a transit, or a, a transportation commercial park eligible property. There's, there's criteria in the reg that spells that out. But in, when, when those regulations were initially formulated, the idea was the parcels closest to the train station, we would want to concentrate on developing first. And depending on how that goes, radiate outward. So that white dashed polygon line was a recommendation in the plan to expand, for the commission's consideration, to expand potential eligibility of parcels. That doesn't establish any parcel as part of this because it's an overlay that you would have to approve for that to go forward.
Thank you.
But again, happy to talk to any of you between now and the next meeting if you've got questions or issues about what has been laid out.
Commissioner Pekowski?
I just wanted to say that I do support tabling and I was not here for the initial presentation, so I appreciate that. And I definitely will be meeting on the same too, I guess we'll have some more. So thank you.
Motion on the, motion on the table is a motion to table. We're ready to vote? Can we vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Count seven, passes unanimously. Public, next item is public hearing. Eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road, request of eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road LLC to release two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents of a two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-twelve-dollar-and-fifty-cent bond pertaining to subdivision improvements in, in the triple-A zone.
Mr. Chairman, Attorney Russo is joining us remotely to.
Oh, that makes, yeah. Attorney Russo, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, Chairman. Chairman Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC offices at ten Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield, Connecticut. Glad to be before you tonight, sorry I can't be there in person, I'm feeling a little under the weather. But here on a, a bond release, a partial bond release, not of the complete bond, but a partial bond release. You may recall this, I'm sure you recall this project, it's a seven, it was a seven-lot subdivision at eleven forty-three Sasko Hill Road. And you may also recall that we recently had a request for a fifty percent reduction of this bond, which you granted. At this point, the, of the subdivision project, all the common elements of the subdivision, so the subdivision road and the drainage systems have all been installed. The only things that are remaining are specific to the developments, the development of each of the lots. So the, particularly the drainage for each of these lots. And, and then the installation of street trees, which is about to happen shortly. We were waiting for all the work to be done, you know, with the road and, and the, and the road drainage. Just because, you know, there would always be a risk that somebody would just accidentally hit a tree when you're moving over, moving all that equipment there. But now that it's, you know, spring is upon us, we're, we're hoping to plant those, those street trees. But what we're asking, the, the portion that we're asking for a release from tonight is the, everything that is specific to the development of the lots. And I talked with Jim about this a number of times. And, you know, sometimes subdivisions come before you where, you know, it's a builder who's proposing it and their intent is to, you know, to get the, to have the subdivision approved and then immediately go into building houses on the lots. And then there's others, which is kind of this situation where the applicant received approval for the subdivision and is now just looking to sell the lots for buyers to go ahead and develop. And in that situation, you know, in the situation for this, this property, you know, in talking with Jim and talking with the, with the town engineer, it seemed like it would be appropriate to ask for a release of the portion of the bond that is specific to lot developments. Because, you know, the issue being that, you know, we don't know what will happen in the future with these lots as far as development. Whether somebody's going to come and put in a three-thousand-square-foot house, a four-thousand-square-foot house, a five-thousand-square-foot house. We don't know where they may put the house, so where this drainage may be located. So there's no real sense in installing this drainage at this time until somebody actually buys a lot and then they would come in and, and apply for a building permit to build a, to build a dwelling there. So we felt that this, it would be appropriate to make this request because the town would be fully protected in knowing that, just like any other single-family development, if somebody came, you couldn't get a seal for any of these properties for a, for a single-family dwelling without putting in the drainage, the appropriate drainage and, and things like that, that are the things that are, you know, covered by this bond and that we're asking a release from. So, you know, and I, I don't want to put words in Jim's mouth, but, you know, it seemed in conversations with the engineer, the town engineer and with Jim that, that, you know, we could make this request for the release of the bond, but the town would be fully protected in that if anybody came forward in the future, which is li, you know, obviously likely is the intent, that somebody would come forward in the future to develop these lots, would pull a building permit for a single-family dwelling and would have the requirement to put in the appropriate drainage for their lot. So that's, that's the request that's before you tonight. And, and again, all the, the subdivision, the common subdivision improvements, you know, which is basically the road, the private road that's there, and then the drainage system for the private road and all the curbing and everything, that's all been done. The only thing that's common that is still left is the street trees, which should happen here in the next couple of months. Everything else is lot-specific development. And again, without knowing exactly what is going to go there, it would almost, it would just want to make any sense because somebody might come in with a bigger house and require a bigger drainage system. So it would, it, it could end up being a complete waste to installing that. So that's really it and happy to answer any, any questions.
Commissioner Braun?
Um, we didn't have any paperwork with this. Would it be possible to get something from engineering confirming what you're saying? And also, is this the same development that we approved, had to be over a year ago, for seven houses up on Sasko Hill Road?
Yeah.
And you have a conservation piece with, with Aspartuck Land Trust? So that's my only concern, that I would like to hear from Aspartuck Land Trust that they don't oppose releasing the bond because it looks like they're releasing like nine-tenths of the bond. And I only have concern that we protect the natural resource that Aspartuck Land Trust is in charge of. Have they weighed in with you on that?
Right, so, so yes, so with Aspartuck, what we did at the time when this was getting approved, we agreed to an amendment with them for their conservation restriction that bolstered their conservation restriction even further. So that's, that's all been. So that's, that's all been recorded and that's been taken care of. And then on top of it, there was open space that was, you know, part of your, part of your subdivision regulations, there's a requirement for open space. And so when we filed the subdivision map, which was, which was recorded timely, you know, that designated the area for open space, so that's also protected. On top of that, there, as part of the wetlands application, but was also something that was done in coordination with Aspartuck, there was a habitat enhancement plan. That's a three-year plan, it's to address the conservation area, basically remove invasives was the big portion of that and the initial kind of work with that is removing the invasives. And then a three-year maintenance program to make sure that they didn't come back. That was in the wetlands approval and that has its own separate bond that is still in place to make sure that that maintenance happens in the conservation area. This one...
I may be remembering wrong. Oh, bond, yeah. Go on.
No, I was just going to say, what this bond is really just related to is releasing the lot-specific developments, which would be the drainage systems for each lot. But right now, we don't, we're not proposing any houses there, no building permits have been pulled for any of those lots. And I mean, you know, some, some may sell this year, some may sell next year, some may sell five years from now. It's really hard to know. It's, there's also the possibility that somebody could come in and buy two lots and then you wouldn't have, you know, seven individual drainage systems. So it's really, what it's covering right now, what the subdivision bond is covering right now, is really just kind of purely speculative and the town would be totally covered in that whoever pulled the building permit would have to show these drainage systems when you would go above the house.
So, tell me if I'm remembering wrong, I thought this application was to build all the houses, so we would, but it's not. So you're just...
No, it's not. And not only that, because it's in coastal, we have to come back before you for those houses. Because you, when we came to you, we got a CAM approval just for the subdivision and none of the dwellings. So those houses would have to come back for you for coastal site plan approval.
I have a question for Jim, maybe he's explained this. I'm just worried about drainage, we don't know what it is and we're releasing nine tenths of the money.
Yeah, let me, let me go back. The main purpose of a bond for a subdivision is to protect prospective lot purchasers. When a subdivision is approved, you're approving the layout of the lot. And once that map is recorded on the land records, the owners can then sell those lots, even before the improvements are made. And so the purpose of a bond is to set aside that money so should somebody buy a lot and the road never gets constructed, that lot doesn't have any value unless those improvements are made. So the bond guarantees those improvements, the in common improvements to create access for those lots. The individual lot development is a different thing. There's actually been a change in the statute last year and we're likely going to need to change the way we bond for subdivisions that actually, the only thing that we can now, I believe the way the statute was adjusted, is bond for are the things that are ultimately going to be the town's domain. So this is a little different and it's a private road, but an example where somebody subdivides, builds a new street, that's ultimately going to become a town road, we can bond for the construction of that road and all the drainage that entails, but we're not allowed to bond for the individual lot development, because that's a private lot, those are going to be handled by the individual owners. So in this case, the road's in, it's a private road, there's a gate in front of it, so you can't just drive in there, but if you drive down there, you'll see it, it looks like a big long private driveway, there's a, there's a, there's a gate. All that's in, and you do have a report, it was attached as an attachment to the agenda email.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
That's okay, that, from the engineering department concurring that all of the in common work, except for the street trees, has been completed. So we concur with the philosophy that this is a bit of a unique piece of property, these are going to be incredibly high-value lots that are likely not to all develop at once, maybe not for years. So it makes sense, and as Chris had indicated, the, when someone produces the actual individual lot plan for a house to be built on any of these lots, then the actual roof leader detention system will be designed then and will have to be completed before they get approval for CO. So we think there's enough regulatory backstop with respect to those individual laws.
So I only saw the email on 2406, was that on the same email? It must have been. Oh, there, I see, I missed that, okay.
Yeah, I should have packaged this separately, it packs it all as one scan.
So, but I don't think the lots come to us once we've approved the subdivision.
Typically, they do not. The only way they would come to you is if, if any of these lots, if the houses are within 100 feet of title, wetlands or coastal bluffs and escarpments, they may need an individual lot coastal site plan. I'm not sure that they will. Typically, once you approve the subdivision, then the lots are an administrative approval on our end, just to make sure that they're meeting all the standards.
Okay, okay, thank you, I really appreciate that.
Does this street have either a water line or sewer line?
It has both.
Yes, and just so the commission knows, we, that sewer line was installed and the WPCA released the bond with regards to the sewer line.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman?
Yes, thank you. Is there any other lot specific improvement other than drainage that remains?
I can answer that. The only, the only thing, the only in common work left are the street trees. The individual lot bonds, or what we typically have bonded for in the past, which we will likely not be able to do going forward, is, is the roof leader detention, a paved driveway apron, which is a nominal amount, and then a set fee for site stabilization, meaning, you know, final grading and seeding of the property.
Very good. And then the big ticket item is the drainage systems, obviously, for the individual lot.
Correct. So while we've included that in this bond estimate, and that has been the practice in the past, the change in the state statute, I don't believe will allow us to continue bonding for those individual improvements, only those which are the in common improvements that we will ultimately be responsible for.
For a future subdivision.
Correct. But, but I think the fact that they have to install those as part of the building permit process for the house, they're not going to get a final CO unless those systems are signed off by everybody.
Thank you, Mr. White. And Mr. Russo.
Commissioner Braun.
So I'm reading the engineering, Anthony Santiago's March 3rd engineering email. He has just one comment, he says he received a monuments plan from Jason, he believes the only other common item left would be the 363 trees. So does that mean that will still be under bonds?
Correct.
Trees? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And you agree with what, with his conclusion, then?
I do. With the request here, I think the way we have written it is to release $249,000 and change out of the remaining $264,000 and change, so there's, that differential will still be...
Thank you.
Commissioner Pococksky?
I just had a clarifying question. So the 14-4 is for just the trees?
Correct.
Okay. And so that original bond money of 264, 254, that did not include anything to do with drainage?
Okay. The original amount was double that. This commission has already approved a 50% bond release.
Okay, yeah.
So, so we've released half, so it was over, it was a $500,000 bond. That was the construction of the road and all the drainage that was, that the road required. But also included in that amount were individual bonds, individual amounts for drainage for each of the lots. What the applicant is requesting is that we release that now because we still will have regulatory control over those lots going forward. So it's, it's a release of all the work in the entire subdivision with the exception of the trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Russo, any...
That's it, thank you, Chair Commissioners.
Any other member of the commission have questions? So, Attorney Russo, you're done? You said correct? Anything else?
Yes, Chair, that, that's all, thank you.
So that, I'll end the initial presentation on this public hearing. I'll open it up to the public. There is nobody present, assuming there's nobody present to talk about this application. Right, yeah. I'll open it up to, is there anybody that's joining us remotely that wishes to be heard on this application? If you're calling in, please, please press star six. Anybody you see, Ms. Hergen? Okay. Last call, anybody in person or joining us remotely or by phone that wishes to be heard on this application? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion of this application. Attorney Russo, I assume you're all set on your end?
I am, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So that will end the public hearing for this application.
Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of procedure at this point, we don't have, because there are some fire training things going on in here, we're likely just going to stay here.
Yeah, that's right. Attorney Russo, you're all set.
But we're going to need to shut down the WebEx.
Yeah.
So it's just going to be us, so you can adjourn, with the exception of the closed executive session.
Okay. We don't have to, do we have to come back on to say, no action?
No, the minutes can reflect that, I don't think you need to come back and do that.
Okay. So we will, the last item is our closed executive session and based on comments from staff, I will close the hearing to go into closed executive session.
You should, I'm sorry, before we close off WebEx, you probably should vote publicly, you do need a two thirds vote to go into closed executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we're right. So may I have a motion to go into executive, Commissioner Berman and Commissioner Harrison, seconds? Any comments or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye, raise your hand. So motion passes unanimously, we'll go into public session and the minutes will reflect, as I said, no action or vote will be taken during closed executive session. So with that, during the meeting.